So the next item is part of our Destination 2025 Strategic Plan reporting. And this is a report out on our state accreditation ratings based on the standards of learning assessment performance and other indicators from the previous school year. You know, these have preliminarily been released since the summer with just those final results being reported on and everything being finalized just in recent weeks. So we are pleased to be able to provide you that comprehensive overview now and even have some guests from our schools here to participate in that and look forward to hearing from them as well. Have Dr. Hinton start us off.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board and Dr. Cashwell. On October the 3rd, the Virginia Department of Education finalized school state accreditation ratings, which is a key performance metric of Destination 2025 Division Strategic Plan. Our presentation this afternoon will provide an overview of the accreditation process and school performance, and the team will share how schools are being supported in their improvement efforts. One of the strategic goals of Destination 2025 is to achieve academic excellence. Towards this effort, the plan includes implementation drivers or action steps that direct the school division to support schools with developing and implementing school quality plans to address accreditation and other goals. One of the metrics used to monitor our progress towards academic excellence are school state accreditation indicators. Annually, schools receive state accreditation ratings based on their performance and progress on academic achievement indicators in English, Math, and Science. For English and Math indicators, performance is based on the number of students who pass SOL or other approved state assessments, or who demonstrate growth across multiple tests. Chronic absenteeism, which is defined as the percentage of students missing 10% or more of the school year, is also included as an indicator in accreditation for all schools. Additionally, high schools have several other indicators that factor into their accreditation ratings, including the Graduation and Completion Index, dropout rate, and a new indicator this year of college career and civic readiness. The CCCRI indicator measures for the graduating cohort, student preparation for college and careers while in high school. Credit is given for advanced coursework such as AP, IB, and dual enrollment course completion, CTE courses and credentials, JROTC coursework and credentials, work-based learning and service learning experiences. For each indicator, schools receive a level designation of 1, 2, or 3 based on their performance or progress towards meeting established benchmarks using either current year data or a three-year calculation. A school's overall accreditation rating is based on the performance levels of the indicators. This slide shows a summary of each accreditation indicator and the percentage and number of schools at each level. You'll note that a large majority of our schools are achieving at Level 1 for English and Math when we consider all students together. However, as data are disaggregated by achievement gap group, more schools are at Level 2 or 3. Additionally, the majority of our schools are at Level 1 for Graduation and Completion Index, and we've seen an increase since last year of schools with a Level 1 rating. Consequently, we are also seeing more schools with a Level 1 rating for the dropout rate indicator when compared to the prior year. For the new CCCRI indicator, the majority of schools are at Level 2 or 3. For the English and Math achievement gap indicators, groups are also given levels based on performance and progress. The combination of student group ratings determines a school overall rating on the indicator. When we examine school levels by group for English, you'll see that a majority of schools are achieving at Level 1 for all groups, except students with disabilities. In comparison to the other groups, more schools are at Level 2 or 3 in the Black and economically disadvantaged groups. However, when compared to the prior year, we've seen an increase in schools at Level 1 across all groups. In reviewing the group data for math, we see more schools at Level 1 across most groups when compared to English, but the same general trends. As I mentioned earlier, a school's overall accreditation rating is based on the performance levels of the indicators. Schools are accredited if each indicator is Level 1 or 2. Schools are accredited with conditions if one or more indicators are at Level 3. The Virginia Board of Education determines if any school is denied accreditation. All Henrico schools are accredited this year, with 84% of schools fully accredited and 16% accredited with conditions. We are pleased to share that we have two schools who became fully accredited this year. We have representatives from the teams at Montrose Elementary and Elko Middle School here with us this afternoon. If they will stand, please help us congratulate them and their communities for their hard I'd also like to note that Board Docs includes an attachment with the accreditation information for each of our schools for your reference, and the information is also available on the Virginia School Quality Profiles located on the Virginia Department of Education website. At this time, Ms. Sealy, Director of School Quality, will provide an update on the process being used in both the division and schools to support improvement efforts.
Good afternoon. The vision of the Henrico County Public Schools Department of School Quality in alignment with Destination 2025 is to provide ongoing support for schools regardless of their accreditation level. At the request of principals, we have restructured the department to emphasize central school quality support, pushing into the building for hands-on support with principals and school teams. This is different from previous years when we were conducting pull-out professional learning with the requirement on the principals to implement on their own. Our focus this year is on the use of improvement science to impact school quality indicators. Together, chiefs, directors, specialists, principals, and associate principals are committed to the "I'm an improver" mindset by learning about improvement science and applying it to the school quality process. All schools, regardless of the level of their academic indicators, are carefully reviewing the needs of their students in order to develop the most responsive school quality plan possible. Schools are also reviewing and revising their response to chronic absenteeism with a focus on building positive attendance habits and deeply understanding the barriers that keep students from regularly attending school. There are three key ways the School Quality Department is supporting schools in the development and implementation of their school quality plans. Through alignment of division resources, problem-solving at the division level, and simplifying reporting, we believe we have refined the process to provide a high level of support for all schools as they navigate this year's accreditation process. Collaboration with the Division of Learning allows School Quality to ensure the plans are aligned with the division expectations and best practices. By including key division staff in all parts of the process, we provide schools with the support they need to implement their plans. Division Network Improvement Committees, also known as NICS, are designed to identify division concerns in the accreditation indicators. They are led by school quality staff and include representation from all departments in the Division of Learning, as well as equity, diversity, and opportunity, and family and community engagement. Division NICS follow the same school quality process as schools. They completed a comprehensive needs assessment and wrote a plan to respond to the root cause of the concerns. The teams will now work with two to three volunteer schools to test the solution before deciding if we scale it to all schools. Finally, we are simplifying the reporting process for schools around division-required assessments, as well as regular updates of their progress on their school quality plans. School scorecards will give us a quarterly update of school progress without requiring schools to report additional data. No matter the level of accreditation, all of our schools are working hard to implement changes that will support the needs of their students. All Henrico County principals are committed to the continuous improvement process. With us today to share specific examples of this process are Dr. Jessica Burbick, Principal at Short Pump Middle School, and Dr. Shondell Edward Hamlin, Principal at Fair Oaks Elementary. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Burbick.
The school quality indicator we are working to improve is student achievement in the areas of English and Math achievement gap groups with a focus on our subgroup of students with disabilities. When we completed the comprehensive needs assessment around this indicator, we identified several possible root causes of the problem. With a focus on exploring one root cause at a time, we chose the need for additional individualized professional learning for our teachers and teaching pairs of students with disabilities. The strategy to address our root cause will be to collaborate with our Central Office Exceptional Education and Professional Learning Teams, Team Members, to develop and implement timely and continuous professional learning opportunities. This professional learning will be designed for general education and exceptional education teachers of our students with disabilities. Training will be provided within department teams and for general and exceptional education collaborative pairs in English and Math. Our measure of success will be evidenced by the increase in student achievement on English and Math county assessments of the aligned curriculum and end-of-year SOLs for our subgroup of students with disabilities. Our action plan includes four steps. First, we will determine a baseline of teacher efficacy and knowledge of best practice for teaching and providing specially-designed instruction for students with disabilities in the English and Math classrooms. We will determine this baseline knowledge using self-assessments, rating scales, and feedback forms. We will then use the baseline data to develop targeted professional learning opportunities for our teachers. We will conduct regular observations of classrooms to gather data on the strategies and research-based best practices being implemented. We will provide evidence-based and specific feedback to our teachers, along with the necessary support to implement recommended changes and adjustments. We will measure the success of these action steps using achievement data for our students with disabilities, along with observation data to guide continued professional learning experiences. The work on this school has already begun, as you can see from the photos of our teachers participating in professional learning and implementing the learning with their students. I will now turn the presentation over to my colleague, the Principal of Fair Oaks Elementary, Dr. Shondell Edward Hamlin.
Fair Oaks is Level 3 for the Science School Indicator. For the purposes of VDOA accreditation standards, the focus is on the 5th grade SOL performance. When we completed the comprehensive needs assessment around the Science Indicator, we identified several possible root causes of the problem. With a focus on exploring one root cause at a time, we elected to address the content knowledge of novice teachers. This impacted effective delivery to include hands-on investigation experiences. The strategy to address the root calls will work to support the needs of both teachers and students. Fair Oaks will increase the scientific investigation opportunities for all students by providing teachers with support from the district science coach to design and deliver the aligned curriculum. These efforts will be monitored by the administration team through classroom observations, walkthroughs, attendance and planning meetings, and science unit assessment data discussions. Carnegie Foundation, which is also referenced in the book "Learning to Improve," provides research about the importance of active learning. This research shows students learn best when they are provided an opportunity to conduct scientific inquiry. To support our teachers in implementing scientific investigation opportunities, we will focus on professional learning to gain knowledge on scientific inquiry-based practices. As outlined in the HCPS instructional model, students' growth and success will be measured throughout the year with school-based and state-based assessments, which will be formative and summative in nature. Students' performance data and the needs of the educator will be the focus of planning meetings, as well as data discussions. The formative assessments will be driven by performance data, student and teacher. And summative assessment will be in the form of the Spring 2024 Standards of Learning In order to address the root calls, we will implement the following action steps. Conduct professional learning for teachers based on the educator's needs and SOL requirements. Model lessons for teachers. Provide opportunities for peer observations. And provide timely feedback after classroom visits to include follow-up discussions. We will lead data discussions and teach your self-reflection after unit assessments. Teachers begin at Fair Oaks on the Fair Oaks School Quality Plan just before school began, as you can see from the photo slides in the slide deck. I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Thomas Farrell, Director of High Schools.
Our schools have started strong, anchoring our work on hope, belonging, and learning. As a Central Office team, we're supporting the needs of our schools by building the capacity of our instructional staff and school leaders through professional learning. We also provide resources and support for extended learning opportunities and targeted interventions for individual students. To monitor and support the work of our schools, directors meet with principals and administrative teams monthly. In addition, directors and other members of the Central Office team work alongside schools to review student data collected through various platforms. This collaboration allows for the Central Office team to be deliberate with allocating resources and support, ensuring that all schools have what they need to support staff and students. While the Division of School Leadership Directors are the first level of support for schools, our entire Central Office team is committed to the excellence of all schools and programs in HCPS. This concludes our update, and we welcome questions at this time.
Thank you so much to Dr. Hinton, Ms. Sealy, Dr. Burbick, Dr. Edwards-Hamlin, and Dr. Farrell. And once again, really, congratulations. I'm sure Board members are going to have more to say to our Elko Middle School team, as well as our Montrose Elementary Schools teams. Thank you so much for being here with us today, and congratulations, really. We're so proud of you and all the work that you've done, and please let us know if there's any way we specifically can continue to support you. I'm going to start to my left with Ms. Shea.
Thank you so much, team. There's certainly a lot to process here, and even with this, I know this just kind of skims the surface of all of the data that goes behind this. So I will just start right in. Kind of speaking to what we talked about in our legislative agenda, the goalposts with this seem to keep moving in terms of not only what's required of us and our students, but also when we look at the actual SOL assessments, students are having to take less SOLs, which is the right move for students. But I know that also impacts, when we just kind of look at the raw scores, what that looks like, particularly at the high school level. If a student passes, for example, let's say they pass the Biology SOL in 9th grade, that means they don't have to take any more Science SOLs in high school. However, if they do not pass the Biology, then they would take hypothetically the Chemistry. So we're looking at often like the subset of students taking the Chemistry SOL are mostly students who have not been successful in previous SOLs. So we would expect that to impact the pass rate then of those subsequent SOLs. Has the state taken that into account at all?
I'll just note, yes, they have. I mean, I think there's acknowledgement that the current system, which again, every year has some nuances that are a tad different, and all well-intended, I'd say the addition of the CCCRI for high schools makes sense as an indicator, right? But even that itself came with some complications, which then delayed the accreditation results because we were able to resubmit some things there. You know, I think what we've seen, at least in recent months, is that the Virginia Board of Education is looking at a new way forward that may not include many of the components as we know them today. So I certainly don't want to say it's a futile discussion, but I think to the point made earlier, there have been small tweaks along the way. I think as they're considering a general overhaul, the kinds of things you're mentioning have been part of the discussion. You know, what is it that works well with our current system, where there are some challenges? I think we all know that, you know, there are some challenges, and we've been advocating around those for some time. So I think they've sought to address them, and how could growth perhaps be factored in indifferently, so on and so forth. So it may be too early to tell. Do you have anything to add to that, Dr. Hinton?
No, I think you summarized it very well in terms of, you know, some of the changes that may be coming in the next couple of years. But at this point, you know, the accreditation model is pretty consistent in terms of what's being included from year to year.
Thank you. Well, and I think also, as the public works to digest, you know, this data and this information beyond just the 1, 2, 3, but as they look at these numbers, I think there's an information gap there as well. It's not like SOLs 10 years ago where every student took every SOL, and so also with, which is beyond our control, but you know, the external rating systems that like rate our schools, which is what a lot of parents look at when they're buying houses and this sort of that, like none of that has caught up to the constant changes with accreditation. And so I just, I think that's a significant hurdle, not for our schools and our school personnel to deal with, but as we look at how the public's digesting this information and we try to help them along in understanding. I notice when I look at these, when I look at all of our scores kind of in aggregate, that HVA has some challenges in their accreditation. I know that's a new program that we're looking at, that we have started. What are our, what do we think the root cause is there, and how can we, how can we support that?
With...
Well, HVA, when we look at kind of their accreditation ratings, is an opportunity for growth there for us. So what do we see as some of the root causes for their, you know, for some of their challenges? And how as a board can we support and advocate for them?
I'll take a stab at that one. To say that I don't know that it would be fair for me to give an assessment on the spot, but that's certainly something we can get you a little more detail on. I do know some from preliminary conversations, yes, a new program. So, you know, we're unpacking anything from the implications of instruction, the instructional model, to understanding, you know, it is a smaller student body than a comprehensive school, and to the point you were making earlier, when you look at a smaller subset of students, the way the data may reflect may not be the best reflection, given unique student needs and scenarios and all of those things, the reasons students may be opting for this environment if they haven't been successful in the traditional environment. And so I don't want to overgeneralize because every student is unique and brings talents and treasures, but that's certainly the school improvement process that we heard from two schools on, and the way they dig into the root cause and unpack the data is exactly what they're doing to get to the bottom of that. So we'd be happy to share kind of what they're unpacking so that I can give you some more specifics there.
Fantastic, and I appreciate that context that you added as well, Dr. Cashwell. I know some of these Level 3 areas have been, we've really embraced those as opportunities for growth and change, particularly, for example, with Tucker's dropout rate. I know that's been a, Ms. Agburn's talked about it, that's been a challenge, and specifically with the EL population there and the transancy there. So is it too, or I know last year we implemented, or you all implemented some new support programs around that. Is it too early to see impact from that? Are we seeing good trends?
Yes, I think it's still a little too early to see, you know, full impact of the implementation of that program, but we are starting to see some more positive trends in terms of the level of engagement from the students and families. So we're excited about the work that's being done. We think it's going to have an impact, but at this point, I just think it's too early to be able to determine the full impact of what we started last year.
Thank you. And then to Emery's team, just kudos for really taking feedback from the principals and the schools as to what's the most value-added in terms of coaching and time for simplifying reporting process. I'm kind of going to the uninitiative that Ms. Consello was talking about earlier. How do we get the same benefit out with less red tape and that sort of thing? So thank you for your team for really taking that to heart and digging into that. And then just, this may be a longer question than this has time for, so feel free to report to me later. But you know, as we look at this in conjunction with tutoring efforts, where do we fall on those tutoring efforts? What can you share, or if it's better to report back at another time, that's fine as well?
I will be reporting back, and I am glad you asked, so you would have gotten the report whether you, because there's plenty more to come on this topic. But I mean, certainly, we have always used SOL data and other assessment data to really hone in on students who need remediation and tutoring in our schools. We've always offered that, and I think our schools do an incredible job remediating. What I think you're probably referring to is just recently, the VDOE put forward some initial state funds, still to be determined. We're working through that, along with an All-in-Virginia Plan that has funding, kind of a 70, 20, 10% dictated spending plan, with the largest portion of that going to student tutoring efforts, if you will. And the way they're defining tutoring looks different than simply the remediation. We've taken into account in the past, we're looking at acceleration models and so on. They are looking at additional categories that we've not typically included. So these include requirements for us to provide tutoring to students who have passed but are at risk of failing, if you'll recall that category, which we saw newly shared with some data. So we're working to support our schools with understanding who would be required to be remediated. There are some very specific requirements about how that looks, the number of times they have to have per week, the dosage. There are some significant implications to the human resources needed to provide this. We've elevated that across the state, every superintendent has. They have, VDOE has given some flexibility there. All this to say, we know what's required, we know where we have some flexibility. Our teams are working to develop some protocols for our schools that give them the most freedom and flexibility to do well what we know they can do well, but also some supports. There are still some lingering questions related to how that will be implemented and exactly what the funding looks like. The State Calc Tool for school divisions is yet to be released, not yet, so even as of sitting here today. So plans have to go to VDOE, they have to be approved before funds can be received, and so on. So we'll keep the Board up to date on those efforts, and you know, really, to the point of, you know, the pressure on our schools and the many things. You talk about uninitatives and initiatives, you know, here's something, you know, coming from the top that certainly aligns with our belief that all students deserve to have, you know, quality instruction remediation when they needed to get on target, but put some layers in place that involves maybe a little more red tape than we're used to here. So we're going to try to keep that as smooth as possible and reduce any additional anxieties on our teams and how they implement that. We'll keep you posted.
Thank you. I think, yeah, my first thought with, when I, some of these tutoring is where are we going to find the people? Like, where are we going to find the high-quality people that can really move the needle for our students that we don't already have in a classroom, like that we don't already have elsewhere? And so, so that will be interesting. I want to give a shout out to one of my, all my schools doing incredible things, serving the needs of students and finding these gaps and filling them. The Freeman Math Department specifically last year just did an extraordinary job in how they identified even like sub-strands of things that students were perhaps struggling with before it became an issue, and the way they like team taught during their Freeman Focus Time. I mean, it was just an all-hands-on-deck, incredible effort. They saw huge improvement in their, in their outcomes as well. So, and then just tied to that, as we think about this tutoring and where we're finding the people, I know some of our cars have shared just the challenge, even in our model we have now before the expansion, of finding these high-quality individuals to come do the remediation on a, on a regular schedule. And so this is a HR legal kind of consideration to make sure we don't have entanglement, but some of our, our teachers who are willing to do that remediation outside of their class, right, outside of their normal kind of scope of instruction, but that are willing to do that remediation during their planning time or whatever else, being able to compensate them accordingly like we would from someone we hire from the outside, that may provide us some more human resource flex there.
That's exactly one of the, you mentioned... That's exactly one of the, you mentioned one of the many considerations we're untangling and working with schools on. Again, to give them the most flexibility to leverage the qualified staff we have on hand and do so in a manner when we're most likely to have high student attendance. You know, we know from, as you've pointed, the after school models and so on, they provide a number of challenges. So we're going to keep all options open and support our schools in every way we can to, you know, meeting the requirements of the All In plans, but also allowing the most flexibility possible and considering points like you just made. So more guidance for our schools to come and we'll keep you all posted.
Awesome. And then just lastly, Elko Montrose, extraordinary, just extraordinary job. Again, all of our schools are doing, are doing really great work, but the gains made, the investment in your students and looking outside of the box and figuring out the need and filling the need. We are so proud and we are so excited to see, just like we said, this is just one tool we look at to look at what's going on in schools, but to see those significant gains, thank you. Thank you for your incredible work. We are, even before the meeting, we were talking, did you see Montrose? Did you see Elko? We were just thrilled to see that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shane. Thank you for highlighting the, the HR requirements for all of the tutoring with All In Virginia, because I know when I prepped for today's meeting, a quote jumped out at me that I read, and it reads as follows, "Anyone can apply to be a tutor and applications will be on the Virginia Department of Education website." So please, thank you. So just thank you for highlighting qualified. And thank you, team, for already realizing this within that we should really try to make use of our qualified employees that we already have and finding the funding to support them. So thank you for letting me just highlight what you just said in the moment. Mrs. Agburn, comments or questions?
Sure. Thank you. First of all, I love that we are looking at the root causes, drilling down, finding out what is it that we really need to work on and get sort of a laser focus on something. It seems like such a much more impactful strategy than might have, have come before. But, but to follow up on what Ms. Shay was saying, the chronic absenteeism and the dropout rate is, is one of the things that I follow a lot with, especially at Tucker, because this is something we talked to Mr. Raymond about a lot. So just curious, is there a baseline strategy that we have for across the county for addressing this that's then sort of adapted to each school's needs? Or is this one of those things that we address individually at each school? I'm just curious if there's something that we all share, a strategy or?
So as far as chronic absenteeism goes, the strategy that we are looking at first with our schools with that indicator is do you have a very detailed tracking system when it comes to why students are absent? So as we know, for chronic absenteeism, it can be excused or unexcused. It doesn't necessarily have to be a truancy issue, which we track very well. So first, just implementing a, a tracking system that is monitored weekly through the attendance teams. And we are, so you heard me mention the NIC. We have a chronic absenteeism NIC that is working with a handful of schools to actually prepare an HCPS process that we would deploy to schools and say, here's what we want you to do. But we are starting with the Attendance Works best practices of do you have a running document? Not just of the current kids who are trending chronically absent, because right now that's two absences, given the number of, of weeks we've been in school. But do you, are you also looking at the students from last year who were chronically absent? Do you understand why? How are we making outreach to the families? And then once we have that, we can start looking at what drives the chronic absenteeism at that particular school and start putting resources toward that and understanding that, the kind of trends that show in the data. But to get to that point, we have to watch that weekly and have the attendance teams talking about that. And so every school has an attendance team, which has their attendance secretary and their registrar and an administrator and teachers on there that are really digging into the data to understand the barriers and challenges and how we can address those.
Right. That's, that's great information. I appreciate it. Are we still, I know this is something we've talked about in the past, penalized by as far as is this, the chronic absenteeism and the dropout rate by students who leave the system, but don't tell us where they went?
Yes.
Is this still as big a problem as it, I mean, because, because it happens a lot, I think, more than most people even realize. Do we even, I mean, how do we track that? I know that's just constant work, but it's a big problem. I, do you have, I mean, just curious, like.
It's hard. Our schools have turned into detective agencies. They utilize every phone number they can find, social media, you name it, talking to friends, family members that might have known a student. And in some cases, it's just impossible to, to track students down. So, but we don't quit. We don't give up. You know, we are, every single day, if we're not seeing kids, we're, we're trying some form of outreach.
And that, I think, is one of the reasons why this number, when you look at the dropout rate and the chronic absenteeism is a little bit deceptive. It's, you know, because some of those kids, it's not that they're chronically absent or they dropped, they just left. And so, you know, I think that's, it's, it's why this is always, I think it's a, obviously concerning, but it can also be a little bit confusing as to what the reality is. The only other question I have, if we can look at the middle school slide, go back. Yeah, this one, when I was looking at, this one, when I was looking at through all of this, this is the one that jumped out at me the most because, you know, years ago Reverend Cooper and I remember the middle school transformation and we went through this really big effort to put work into our middle schools. We were going to get those kids more engaged. We added GIZA. We've added programs. We've, we worked so hard to try and beef up the middle school program. And I'm looking at this and I'm like, what more can we do? Because obviously we have a slide from elementary school to middle school and then we go back up. And I mean, we all know middle school, it's, it's tough. It's just, I'm preaching to the choir here. I mean, middle school is just those tough couple of years for a lot of our students. But are we looking at sort of a combo thing, I'm wondering? Are our elementary schools needing to do more to prepare our students for middle school so that they are more ready? I think that's probably part of it. One of the things that over the years I've talked about a lot is that, you know, most of our middle school teachers are subject area. They're not trained when they're in college to be reading teachers, for example. And so that's, I know we've added interventions at middle school to address our, our kids that are having trouble with reading. But, you know, in order to be successful in middle school, those kids need to be reading on grade level. And so I'm, I'm thinking that part of this, we need to go to the elementary, look at and drill down, what is the root cause of this slide? And I'm wondering if, if a good bit of this could be, we need to beef up some things in elementary school to get the kids ready for middle school and what that secret sauce might be. I know that's a big topic, but I'm just looking at this and I went, we've done so much work for middle school and we're, I think we still have, we need to do more. And I'm wondering what the more is.
I would note to your point, I mean, we're certainly always looking at transitions. And I think some, some observations board members have made, yourself included, about kind of what the apples to apples comparison looks like year to year or test to test. So if you have students leaving on grade level and then there's not a match in sixth grade, you know, is it that they felt, what's being measured and the way it's being measured and what's being tested is vastly different than what we're looking at when we're looking at elementary SOL tests? And to your point about which subjects are tested in high school and when? And so, you know, you're not looking at, you know, science performance in elementary to science performance in high school. All of a sudden you've got areas that aren't tested, but were tested. And, and so it really gets hard to draw the kind of comparison that we're all naturally led to want to make by looking at this slide. And so that is a challenge inherent to our current accountability system when it comes to looking at this. But that doesn't mean we're not looking at, you know, what are the challenges of the middle school experience and how can we set our middle schoolers up for success? And I do think there are always some great lessons to be learned from our elementary educators when it comes to how they plan and differentiate. And we've seen a lot of that transfer into middle school with small group instruction. So, and I apologize, I didn't see Dr. Champ coming forward. I would have called on her. I'm sorry. Did you want to add anything? I know this is something Dr. Champ has worked on tirelessly with our schools.
Actually, you just stated one of the things that we're trying to replicate from the elementary level is the small group instruction, math workshop and so forth. And we've been very deliberate with, with bringing in those practices and implementing those practices, definitely this school year. And also with our day two model for those schools that double block, having a very strategic day two plan in which we have, it's basically small groups. You have them working on no red ink, Lexia, reading, reading for independently and then also, did I say Lexia? And then we're looking at how we bring in that all in tutoring as well. So we have some models that the TL Lab Department have been really working on to streamline that day two plan. But then also with the Virginia Literacy Act that's coming forward, we are going to have to be more strategic with that, having endorsed reading specialists in those courses for next school year.
And that's a positive where the state's putting, you know, we, we would like to see funded the requirements set forth in the Virginia Literacy Act, but are grateful for the focus that brings to the middle school reading programs. And, you know, while currently maybe not funded in the way we'd want it to be to make the requirements happen, we're committed to doing that and have already been making our way with that and some, you know, field testing some programs for reading intervention and so on, and really trying to push that into secondary. It's critical. And I was glad to see the Virginia Literacy Act make that acknowledgement. We'd just like to see the staffing funding to, to back that up, but we do intend to, to move that into the secondary level as well.
Well, and as we go through that, I'm assuming our literacy plan for Henrico will be updated to include all of this. And, and it, I think if we could really hone in on like y'all are doing with the root causes, I have a feeling that if we put more literacy and focus in the middle schools that, that would really help our students. I mean, I hear this a lot from teachers that they'll get kids in sixth grade who are, they're just not reading on grade level. I've said it, you've heard me say it Reverend Cooper, if they can't read that test, they can't pass the test. And, you know, here we are testing them, but their reading level isn't up to where, you know, being a former reading teacher is the thing of mine. But I just, I think if we look at this, it would be really good information to keep us updated on how we can beef this part up and help our middle schools.
Also, I should have mentioned too, actively learn has been a huge resource that we've incorporated into our literacy program this school year. We started last year, but now that the teachers understand exactly how to implement it and then we've been more strategic with our assessments as well, with our quarterly assessments. So we're headed in the right direction.
Right. Thank you so much. That's all from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Agburn. Ms. Atkins?
So I'll be very specific for the Verina District because I'm very excited about what we are doing and it is working. So for folks that will be watching, the Verina District has 15 schools, to high, to middle and 11 elementary schools. And we have continuing to move forward. I think one of the things many accolades have been given, but there's one other area that has been a focus for this district, for my district, which is making sure that we know that our children feel loved. The culture in a building is also significant to their academia and we continue to reinforce that. While we are out of a pandemic, learning loss began way before the pandemic, but we also understand how it compounded some of the issues outside of the school. And I'm very proud that the leadership at Elko started with Dr. Mizell and we have the wonderful esteemed principal with us now, Mr. Lyles and his team moving forward. Over onto Montrose, and I love seeing your smiling face sitting in your chair. It warms my heart. But having the leadership of our principal at Montrose and, and her team, it really is a great example of staying focused. And I just want to make sure that that settles in because there's many distractions. But at the core of education is really staying focused on teaching and love. And I'll just move on from that. I do want to talk about the four schools that are facing accreditations with conditions. My confidence remains steady for John Roth and Verina High School as they are continuing to really become nestled under new leadership. And I recognize that it's going to take more investment of time, but I remain concerned about Highland Springs Elementary School. And I am hoping to hear what we're going to do for improvements in that space. And also I'm hoping to hear some insight on results from the extended middle school program. So if we could share some of that, I'd love to hear it.
We'd be happy to provide you specifics on those schools as we highlighted two examples and don't have all of the school quality plans available for you now, but we can share those where they're drilling down specifically into the data, each and every school, to your point, using that improvement science to make sure they understand their performance and their areas of growth and their areas for continued opportunity. We'll be happy to follow up on those.
I really was hoping to hear a bit more, especially seeing all of the, the data here on every, in every way. But I will be just very honest, not having data for the extended results for the middle school program, I'm a bit.
Well, every school's data is here in, in board docs. I mean, I'm happy if you wanted us to pull specific pieces out. I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to speak to their improvement plans, but we do have those for each school and I would be happy to give them to you. I just wouldn't want to speak for the principals and the root causes they've drilled down. If others have insights, they might know offhand.
I would love to hear something.
Okay.
The other thing I'll just mention is that all of the data noted by school is on the school quality profiles for any member of the public who wants to see how a particular school is doing and is presented in a somewhat different, but digestible way for anyone to access.
And I'm, maybe I'm not, I misunderstood your question. Are you wanting to know their improvement plan? That's how I understood it, or their performance data?
Both.
Okay. Because we do have their performance data and we can speak to that here. What I wouldn't have is their specific, their improvement plans, which they're working towards. But you may have some insights on some things they've discussed so far.
So we're finalizing their improvement plans this week and we can certainly pull those for you. So you can see everything from the comprehensive needs assessment to the plan that's put in place for each indicator. If I am remembering correctly, the middle school was a program last year. So their data is embedded in, in Fairfield's data.
Okay. Now you're answering my questions because I was going to say, I went to some of the sources you've referenced and I have not found it. But that is because their data is incorporated in the Fairfield District.
For, for last year. This year they are a school. Will be reported separately next year.
Thank you so much.
And, and promise you, we will follow up on the individual school plans. So remember the data was only final from VDOE October 3rd. So I want to make sure each principal's had the opportunity to do diligence with the school quality process. So I just, I wouldn't want to get in front of that piece. But yes, that's a good point. And I, I'm sorry, we were missing answering that. We do have their scores and they are reflected, but that's an excellent point related to the secondary was a program versus a standalone school.
Thank you for that. And that, that really does answer the question because I really looked hard to try to find the results of those students too. It's, it's equally as important. And now I know where to look for it, which is going to be, you know, more so in Mr. Reverend Cooper's area, even though they sit in the Verina District. So thank, thank you for that. The other thought that I had, really looking at a more rigorous way that we look at data, I'm sure we do not have it, so do not feel compelled to share in this moment at some future moment. I would like to see how COVID-19's impact, how are we measuring it? Is there a way to measure it? I'm sure there's going to take more time to see it. And thinking about this, I'm wondering about the absenteeism patterns, resource usage, et cetera. I'll use, I'll use Hollis Springs Elementary as an example. There's 39%. There's 39% vacancy there. I think Fair Oaks is around 30%. And so it would be nice to see this pie sliced up with all the different areas and impacts to, in order to have academic gains. I think it is a more holistic way to make decisions. The other piece I'd love to learn more about is around the positive attendance habits. Can you give me examples of how they're implemented across Henrico County? Or some of the ideas that you have and how you want to implement them across Henrico County?
Sure. And this is something that we're working on in the attendance NIC as well. First, it's reframing the idea around positive attendance versus chronic absenteeism. So what are all of the positive reasons that we should be sending kids to school and that students should want to be coming to school? So we did a training with principals in July, just talking about, what are the messages that are going home around attendance? And how those are positive versus constantly calling out the need to focus on chronic absenteeism? So we, and I'm happy to share that with you, gave principals a set of resources that they can use, that have posters that they can put up around the school, things that the principals can include when they call home or when they're doing events at the school. So we have several schools that anytime there's an event at the school, there's a piece around positive attendance and what happens when students are absent and when they're missing either the events or the academic work around school. And that's something that the NIC is trying to embed in that school or the countywide process, that once we launch it at our two or three schools and see how it goes, that we would then like to scale to the rest of the schools as kind of our attendance package around the process, as well as products that we can give them to support positive attendance habits versus tracking chronic absenteeism.
Thank you for that. I like that approach. And I do want to hear more about it. I want to make sure I heard you accurately. Did you say we have attendance officers at each of our schools?
Not, not at each school. Yeah. Dr. Hughes will have to address that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
I think my term was attendant secretaries.
Okay. I just, well, that's why I'm asking. Because I'm taking a lot of notes and I want to make sure they're right.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can address that though. No, we do not currently have attendance officers at each school. We do though, work closely with Amory's team, look at the school quality indicators and look at the levels of where schools are in accreditation. So we do have attendance officers assigned to schools that might be in Level 3 for accreditation. So in other words, which of our schools have the highest chronic absentee rate and also truancy rate? And that's where our attendance officers are placed.
Can you share with me, and it doesn't have to be at this moment, but I'm aware of several schools that do not have attendance officers. And I want to make sure I understand the why. And so the why is because they're allocated to the schools with the higher chronic absenteeism rate. Is that accurate?
That's correct. And then of course, in our schools that don't have attendance officers assigned either part-time or full-time, we have our school social workers and we have our attendance teams within the school that are working to do the similar task. Now, in our budget, we do have a budgetary ask for additional attendance officers because we know that they have been effective going into the community and really reaching out to our families. And as someone said early, really digging into the root cause of attendance. So they've been a wonderful resource and we will be asking for that as we move forward in the budget.
And we've prioritized this a few times over and have looked to, like many of the areas, even where we've added additional positions, we've struggled to find individuals to fill them. So one of the things the team is working on now is looking at the job, the job description, the title, the rate of pay and so on, to make sure we're competitive before we begin adding new positions that might also remain vacant. We want the supports in the school. We've been looking at the model. And while, you know, every school is covered with supports, to your point, really looking at the value that additional staff member can bring, not just where the schools are facing the most difficulty, but to really be proactive in our other schools as well. So as we are working on the budget process, which I know will make its way to the board very soon, sooner than later in December, you'll see some priority staffing requests in that specific arena.
Thank you for that. And similar to Mrs. Augburn, I would wanted to, I took some time to dive a bit deeper specifically around fifth grade because those habits over a period of time are hard to break. And so ensuring that we have attendance officers, I would say elementary, all our schools in my opinion should have an attendance officer. But really understanding the why on how we allocate them is where I'm missing data. So some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time, some of them are going to several schools and some of them are only going to a school if they have high rates. And so I'm wondering if there's a better way to look at that and look at the value. Another question that I have, so thank you, Dr. Hughes for that. And thank you for that response. And I'll land the plane soon. I also want to better understand how we're measuring the academic interventions. I know we have several of them. They look different across the district. However, do we have enough data to understand which ones are most effective so that we can replicate that in other areas, other schools?
So secondary curriculum is no longer my wheelhouse.
I understand.
I want to make sure that I don't miss a beat.
Thank you.
Hi. So these are the types of conversations that are taking place at the school level within their PLC meetings and action team meetings for school quality. And what they do is they look at, you know, student data, various strategies that they're utilizing to teach certain standards and are doing a better job of taking stock of, you know, what's been effective versus what's been ineffective. And we're still working to highlight those strategies that are having the biggest impact on student learning. We're not there yet, but again, we're working very hard to determine, you know, what those strategies are. And these conversations are taking place daily within all of our schools, K-12.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. And I'm aware that the principals get together and really go through some of the things that are working and other areas that they may just want to stop. And I was just curious around that as I receive feedback from families, whether it's, you know, the enrichment through online services or directly in the building and how it competes with other programming at the school. So whether it's an after-school sport or whether there's some other art initiative or band initiative where students and families are trying to wrestle with, well, how do I do the tutoring without impacting band practice? How do I, how does all of this work? And I'm hopeful to learn if there is a school that has that balance, that we replicate that and work a bit smarter versus harder. It may be that we find two or three programs that we see that work, that does not compete with passions of children and work schedules of family and simply replicate that versus having 30 or 40 different programs across the district. I hope that makes sense and is helpful as you're having discussions and many others are, really working collaboratively to find what works.
So I do want to just add one thing that Dr. Champ mentioned regarding the middle school interventions. Those are very specific curriculum that exist within the school day. And those, we are seeing results from those. So if we look at last year's where they were implemented with fidelity and where we were able to provide the teacher professional learning, we have results that show that that day two of reading and math impact that Tier One and are showing up as they are giving the SOL assessments. So that is embedded, that's intervention for the students who are behind grade level, embedded in the school day that is working in terms of the middle school model.
I like, I actually prefer for the interventions to take place before school or during the day. After school, it just competes with so many other priorities. And some of them are necessary, like working and trying to get your child to the tutoring. So I would love to learn a little bit more about the interventions taking place during the day that are successful. And I'll pause at that moment. I do have more questions, but I have access to Dr. Cashwell and the team. Thank you so much, Chair Kinsella.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Atkins. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to just share how appreciative I am of the schools that the faculty have no schools that were denied accreditation. So I just want to say that first and foremost. And I'm also proud of the fact that we have two new schools that are fully accredited. And I also want to just preface everything else I'm about to say. Based upon I know and I reiterate that this document is only one indicator to one. And it's important to reiterate that because I know sitting here the growth that has taken place. And I think, Dr. Cashwell, you mentioned that several times about student growth, right? The student growth, the individual student transcends an aggregate document that shares information pertaining to the school itself. In that being the case, looking at my schools, I know I have two opportunity schools. I'm sorry, three, Glen Lee, LeBurnham and Fairfield, correct? Those are my three. So I'm going to be interested, Amory, as you do every year, when, you know, we get on the call and you go through this with me. Because when you look at the five elementary schools that are credited with conditions, three of them are mine. And you look at the middle schools, four out of the four, three are mine. And, you know, I've gone through the data, so I'm not going to reiterate it. We know what the Level 3s are. And it's not the same. It's not consistent. No one school is suffering from the same Level 3. And I'd just be interested to hear how we're going to apply our systematic support for problem solving, our key division staff, support plan, development division, network improvement committees. I mean, I want to hear that because I know that this document does not tell the full story. I worked closely the last eight years with every elementary school director, Dr. Farrell, his predecessors, as well as Dr. Champ. She was the principal at Wilder. And I would go in her office and she'd have on this whiteboard, goals and improvement that they've made in every area. And so it's just disheartening when there's this misconstruing of data to paint a picture that's not a full picture, but just a piece of a picture. So I just want to say that. And as the school board representative from the district, seeing this data that just came out a week ago, that we're still disaggregating, we're still disseminating. I look forward to partnering with you, Dr. Cash, from the staff, for us to ensure that each of, basically my schools and all of our schools, as Ms. Shea talked about, have all the support they need. Every student, every family, every community. Because again, you know, this is just something that we just, we have this conversation every year. Did you want us to say something?
And I appreciate your reiterating this is one data set and it does not speak to the many efforts and accomplishments in each and every one of our schools and the unique opportunities and successes they've had. And especially as it comes to individual student growth and so much we have to celebrate. You know, but to be able to move each of our schools forward, it's a partnership, right? It's this board partnering, you know, with us and our team to really drill down and use that improvement science and wrap our support systems around our schools. So, you know, that's exactly what we're going to continue to do, to make sure they're getting what they need.
Again, when we talk about the moving goalposts, I think that Ms. Shea even said or Ms. Augburn first, I wish when we talk about legislative agendas, that there would be some sort of mechanism that could catch this data as far as student growth. Because, because again, the aggregate does not show the picture of where they've come from, to where they are and where we believe they can go. And so that's important for me because again, it says one thing, but it's not everything that it says. And so that's what I think. So I look forward to us working toward this, not just my schools, but all of our schools to improve, make it better, better to be great. So thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Board members, have I heard, I know I've heard it from at least Ms. Atkins and Reverend Cooper, am I hearing perhaps two, two ones to better understand our school level data? Right? Okay. After our principals have had time to process what was just released, right? And update their plans accordingly.
And are, you know, continue to be open to, as we've done in the past, just making sure that as the year goes on, we're drilling down into the plans the schools have developed and their progress towards meeting those goals. And we look forward to continuing to connect with the board on that throughout the year. I know that's always been something you all have been keenly interested and we look forward to your feedback on.
Thank you. It is, and especially as we go into budget season, right? We definitely need to meet before we discuss budgets. So thank you for that. When I look at, I know that the new C.C.R.I. rating, what, is new for this year?
Yes. It counted in accreditation this year. They reported it last year.
But it counted toward accreditation. So what is it, two or a three? What are we not doing to have so many of our schools twos and threes?
So it really depends on the school, right? And that's one of the things that we are asking them to do is to disaggregate the data to see what's driving in terms of how are the students meeting that C.C.C.R.I.? Is it because they're a finisher for CTE? Is it because they're taking AP, IB or dual enrollment? That tracking process of understanding where those opportunities are within the school for the students is something that we put in place last year as part of their cohort tracking so that they know, starting in ninth grade, how are students catching the C.C.C.R.I. credit? The other thing we did prior to leaving secondary curriculum, working with Taylor Snow, who's now the director, we put in government an activity, that's the service learning activity, that if nothing else, every student enrolled in government will participate in Project Citizen and that is credit for C.C.C.R.I. And so we are looking at an earlier spot in the curriculum, perhaps in ninth grade health, to put a citizenship or service learning component that students would be able to partake in early. Because the other thing about C.C.C.R.I. is if you drop out, when your graduation cohort comes, you count against C.C.C.R.I. as well.
I'm wondering, and help me, I'm understanding, if we put a component for a service learning in early, ninth, 10th grade. Are our students who perhaps are less engaged, don't want to come to school, are they going to miss a CTE opportunity because they're put in something different that's not meeting the standard? Help me understand.
No, so it would be embedded within.
Students aren't going to miss something, right?
No, it would be embedded within the health curriculum.
Sorry. It would be part of the course they would already be taking, for example, in health and PE. We would embed that.
Right. Like it's, we embedded it in government for this year. It's called Project Citizen. That's a service learning component. If you're in government, you're naturally going to take part in that project this year. And that is a way that the school gets credit for the C.C.C.R.I.
Okay. And then have we noticed, or I guess principals really haven't had a chance to unpack it yet, I'm interested to know if there's any correlation between this component, the C.C.R.I., and students really understanding, because it's a college career civic readiness index, right? So would this lend itself to the schools perhaps, or the students where they're dropping out? Have we looked at that? I mean, I know oftentimes, and maybe these two things aren't related, or maybe Dr. Farrell can speak to it, that when we talk about some of our multilingual learners dropping out because they don't have the hands-on learning experiences that really maybe they would need or an accelerated program that may be of better benefit to them? So I'm interested if there's any correlation in that.
So that's some of what we're asking them to do is they disaggregate the data and look at where are the, what, how did the students in your school who received the credit for that indicator, where did it come from? And are you missing programming that you potentially could implement so that more students would have the opportunity? Because really it's about exposure, right? C.C.C.R.I. is about exposure in high school.
And that's what I'm most interested in, is I'm interested in some of our students that could be more successful perhaps if they had something that was more engaging to them.
And that's some of what we're asking them to look at as they disaggregate the data. Where, you know, where did your students not have the opportunity to reach that? They also have to account for, like I said, dropout. So they need to pull that. If a student dropped out in ninth grade, it now is affecting their C.C.C.R.I. when they become seniors.
And then are we looking at, did our students? Because when I look at this data, I'm thinking, do we, are our students failing the class and the SOL? Or are our students passing the class and failing the SOL? I'd really like some more information, maybe not today because that's a question that's going to require some research and a deeper discussion. But I'm really interested in that. What work can we do there to better understand that information? Because I'd really like to know that, especially at the middle school, high school level.
And that is part of some of what we've asked them to do through their data disaggregation, through the comprehensive needs assessment.
Okay.
That's part of the discussion that we've asked them to have when they're looking at their failure rate when it comes to the standards of learning versus the rate when it comes to the associated class.
And understandably, it is one day in time. But I do want to better understand that information. And then lastly, I know I've asked this before because I know our leaders meet often. But when our principals, for example, you guys had a leadership meeting this week, right? The leadership team met. Are our principals having unscheduled time together just to engage and discuss and perhaps share during these quarters? I don't know how often they meet. But is it unscheduled time where there's not professional learning, just literally conversations where folks can, can... just literally conversations where folks can, can share back to one another?
Absolutely. So at each of our quarterly meetings, and also monthly, elementary and secondary principal meetings, we schedule time for them to just connect and talk about things that are top of mind regarding, you know, academics, chronic absenteeism, all those things. In addition, principals also meet when we don't have meetings, just to discuss some things that are on airplates that they would like to connect with a colleague on. One of the things that I will say that we benefited from with COVID is the virtual meetings. And with principals not having to leave schools, they're having more of those, just connecting on the things that are relevant, like, you know, school quality and other things that are critically important to their school. So they do have time at meetings, but also outside of meeting times to meet and connect.
Well, thank you for reassuring me that time exists, because I know our leaders really do have a lot of the solutions. And if we just share back with one another, I think we'll see continued growth in all of these categories. Really, thank you so much, everyone that worked on today's presentation. Thank you very much. Dr. Cashwell.